All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Councilmember Scribner?
Here.
Mayor Protim Davies?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
And Councilmember Public Court is absent tonight.
All right. Then, if you please stand for the invocation, Pastor Gerald Fair of the Calgary Chapel Church is here this evening.
Good evening, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father in heaven, thank you for this beautiful night. God, thank you for the much-needed rain, Lord, and we just pray you'd continue to open the windows of heaven on this parched land, God, and continue to water this great state, Lord. Tonight, God, we ask that you would grant favor and wisdom and discernment to our council. God, you'd also grant favor to our fire, our police, our hospitals, our businesses, Lord, and all the other entities that make up this great city. So, Father, bless this time now. Give our leaders wisdom, discernment, Lord, and favor, and we'll give you all the glory for it. Thank you for this time, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Michael, would you lead us to the pledge of vote?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Next item is our consent agenda. We're going to remove number five for separate discussion. Is there anyone who would like to remove anything from consent agenda? Anyone in the council?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve with number five removed?
I'll make that motion. I second.
Roll call, vote please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It is a 4-0 vote to approve the consent agenda with removal of item five.
Are there any public comments? Anything that's not on the agenda this evening? All right. Disbursements for RSI Petroleum?
We're going to start with number five.
Number five? Yes, number five. I've got a tickle, but I'm not good at tickling, so.
I'm trying to see what number five is. I didn't have the right. I'm prepared to talk about it again. That's for the request of the closure of Green Street from Tatchy People's Park to F Street.
You're going to go over the event?
The event itself.
Yes.
Sounds good. On Saturday, December 3rd, we are going to host Tatchy Home Town Christmas, and it's something that came to us from the community. It was an idea, and we've been able to kind of put our heads together and expand upon that idea and take it from what we do at Farmer's Market and closing Green Street and having that festival-type atmosphere. We want to do that with a Christmas-themed event, and we've already compiled quite a big list of businesses that want to participate locally in their stores that surround the downtown area, nonprofits, and some other businesses that are going to come forward and take up booth space, if you will, along Green Street. It's going to be all Christmas-themed, a lot of Maker's Market, TVAA is going to have their artists spill out into the street. Our local eateries are going to prepare some to-go, parade-watching family meals and things like that. We wanted to kind of fill the gap between where the Rotary Club starts in the morning with breakfast with Santa. The Depot has their event all day with photos with Santa Claus and their bake sale. And then there was a little gap in the afternoon before the parade started at 5:30, and then the tree lighting after that. And we thought this was a perfect time to invite everyone downtown, shop small, shop local, and then also take care of our nonprofits that have programs, food drives. Knights of Columbus will be out gathering foods as part of their food drive program. Toys for Tots will be there collecting unwrapped toys for boys and girls. South Bay Sharni will be out with bell ringers. We'll have carolers. We've got musicians thanks to Adventist help with Tatchy Valley. There'll be a reading of The Grinch That Stole Christmas.
Wow.
And we may even have a guest appearance by the jolly old guy in a big red suit, and to cap things off. Activities for kids, just a lot of fun, just driving people downtown and then allowing them to go to the businesses that surround downtown. They're going to be offering specials during that time.
So, I think that's a great idea. Any comments from the public? From the council?
Along with item five, there's a special event application. So, is there a... Did you want to go over that?
Yes, so we're just asking that council approve the City of Tatchy Hometown Christmas and Tree Lighting Special Event Application and associated street closures, subject to staff conditions.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to approve the Hometown Christmas and Tree Lighting Special Event Application as presented.
Thank you. Finance Directors Report. RSI Petroleum, dispersments of bills and claims.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSI Petroleum.
Is there any public comment on this item? Councilwoman? Questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So move. Have a second?
Oh, a favor? Roll call.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner? Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 3-0 vote to authorize the dispersments of bills for RSI Petroleum with a recusal from Mayor Protim Davies.
Public Works Directors Report.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor Smith and councilmembers. So, the item I have before you right now is kind of a little bit of a retroactive staff report. So, on August 15th, we had a failure on our Wallstrom well. The pump and the shaft both failed on that well. When that happens, that's kind of a little bit of a crisis, so to speak, and it was an emergency. And so, we contacted several well companies to see their availability and ability to come out and pull the well for us and repair the pump. So, Bakersfield Well and Pump was available in the shortest amount of time. They came out and... They... Once we contacted them and committed to them coming out, they gave us a proposal for $72,300. They came out, they did the work, and all the repairs were completed on October 5th. So, we were pretty lucky to get them to be able to come out, and then in addition to that, we were pretty lucky that they actually had all the materials to actually make the repair and get it back online. So, we have had failures similar to this in the past, and the last two that I know of, we have actually submitted insurance claims for, and our insurance company has paid those, minus the deductible, which is $5,000. So, we're in the process of doing that in this case as well, and we don't have any reason to think it won't be covered, but you know how insurance companies are, you never really know for sure until you have the check. Regardless, though, the Water Fund does have sufficient reserves to cover the full cost of the repair, but hopefully it will only be the $5,000 deductible. So, our recommendation is to authorize Bakersfield Well and Pump to perform emergency repairs on the Wallstrom well in the amount of $72,300 and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to a maximum of 10% of the construction cost or $7,230.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any questions? Council?
So, the job is complete?
Yes.
So, there was no reason... No... We don't have to authorize the 10% because it's already done correct, or do we?
Yeah, actually, we just got the invoice actually Friday, and it was for basically the same amount as the quote. I think it was $72,330.
Okay.
Is the actual amount. So, if you don't want to approve the change order amount, that's fine too.
I just want to make it for the record if we don't need to.
Whatever makes you comfortable.
I had the same thought.
If you do $72,330.
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Yes, is there a second?
I'll second. We're making the motion for the precise amount on the bill?
Yeah, $72,330, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
What's the casing size? Is that two and a half inch?
No, that's, I believe it's eight-inch.
Yeah. I was looking at this two-and-a-half-inch pipe. It seems small, but eight-inch.
The shaft is actually two-and-a-half inches.
Okay, that's what I was... Okay, 14. Yeah, good size. And that was what the pump was down to inside, right? Okay. All right. Roll call, vote please.
Did you get a second?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to authorize Bakersfield Well and Pump Company to perform emergency repairs on the Wallstrom well in the amount of $72,330.
Thank you. Did I hand you up for a question? Okay, thank you. And we're going to table item number 12 for now. Development Services Director Report. Good evening.
Good evening, sorry. All right, got several items for you all tonight. Let me... Apologies, I didn't realize you were tabling 12, so I thought I had a second longer. Sorry about that. Okay, so the first item, Mayor and councilmembers, the first item I have for you tonight is a request for a finding of public convenience or necessity associated with the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, ABC, located at 109 North Green Street. So, certain types of alcohol licenses here in the city require what's known as a finding of public convenience or necessity. The background behind that is a law from 1994 which speaks to concentration of alcohol licenses by census tract. And so, what it says is that if any given census tract has a certain number of licenses as it relates to an amount of population, granting of additional licenses requires that the local governmental agency approve that decision. And so, we get these from time to time. I think the last one we did was well over a year ago. This one is for a business located at 109 North Green Street. It's the La Bodega de Castilla, and so that's a local couple that have... They're really neat. I've been working with them for a couple of years. They kind of have a dream. They have nine-to-five jobs, and they have a dream of opening a little wine and cheese bar, and it's located immediately adjacent to the Darlene's Swell Toys Shop. And so, they're finally ready to get it open, and we've had a little bit of trouble with getting clarity from ABC exactly about the paperwork, so we sort of rushed to get this one on the council because he's been eager to get open for a little bit, and so this has been holding him up. So, in the past, we have approved these before. We have denied one in recent memory. We denied a license of this type for... In a location where immediately adjacent to it was for the sale of hard alcohol, immediately adjacent to it were multiple establishments that already sold off-sale, and so we felt like the additional one didn't provide any benefit to the community. But in this case, this is precisely the type of business we'd like to see in downtown that we produce that zoning for, is the shops that bring people to downtown, especially for nightlife-related events. So, with that, I'm happy to kind of talk about the details if you'd like, but I... My recommendation is that you grant a finding of public convenience and/or necessity for La Bodega de Castilla and to conduct onsite beer and wine sales, a type 42 license at the location in question. And yeah, I'll just stop there. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Jay. Any questions from the audience? From the council? All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All seconded. Roll call, vote please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Scribner? Yes.
Mayor Protim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to grant a finding of public convenience and/or necessity for La Bodega de Castilla to conduct onsite beer and wine sales as presented.
Thank you. Item number 14. We've got the exhibit B is on your placehead.
B and C should be there. So, I apologize. Yeah, I'll start by apologizing to you. I was supposed to provide those to you. There is a copy in the back.
Yeah, there's additional copies for the public.
Those were supposed to be included in the staff report, and I have no great excuse for you. I just didn't quite get it in on time, but...
I don't want to interrupt you, but due to some of the connectivity to the Sage Ranch project, which I have historically recused myself from, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself from this item as well.
All right. We're good. So, hopefully this is not new ground for you all. You recently added development to this project within the last year or to this CFD within the last year. So, in 2017, the council established Community Facilities District, number 2017-1. It is a mellorose community facilities district. There are two types of mellorose districts. One, which has a fixed amount of money that is either paid off over a fixed number of years upon the assessment of that, or there's one of this nature, which is an ongoing assessment that occurs in perpetuity on the property that it affects. The purpose of the CFD is to provide additional funds for the city specifically to the areas of police protection, street maintenance, and landscaping within the Tatchy area. So, the original report produced a nexus that associated in general the growth of residential and non-residential businesses with the growth in the city's needs to supply policing services and street services beyond what the revenue from that development through property taxes would likely generate. And so, CFDs have grown in quite a bit of popularity here in the state of California because they have the value of sort of making up that gap in expenses associated with policing and road maintenance in particular, associated with development. So, tonight you're considering... Or tonight what we're doing is announcing our intent to annex this project into the CFD, so that's going to be the action. The project is track number 7366, which is the Sage Ranch project, located on Valley Boulevard, west of Dennison, east of Curry, and north of Pinion Street. The project includes the development of 795 lots, single-family and multifamily. A couple of those lots are apartment complexes, which is how you get to the roughly 995 lots that that development... That's the number that's been spoken about in the past. The assessors' numbers are included in the staff report. We've contracted with Willdan Financial Services to prepare the resolutions and balloting process for this. After tonight, should you choose to move forward with the CFD, we will be mailing out ballots to the property owner for their consideration. This is a map showing the area in question to be annexed to the CFD. So, this is the first step again tonight for this annexation action. The second step is the actual annexation. We would like to establish tonight via these resolutions that that meeting date is December 19, 2022, or January or after. There will be a public hearing at that meeting for final consideration of this annexation. The way this works too is a reminder for you all is that no tax assessments land upon the property or additional tax assessments land upon the property until the property is developed. And so, the CFD will pass down through the mapping process. Right now, it's five lots, but if the final maps get approved and recorded, then it becomes 795 lots ultimately, and the CFD persists as it turns from five lots into 795 lots. And then again, the assessments on those lots do not occur until those lots improve, meaning they build the house. And then, then in the taxing year after the construction of the house, that's when the levy first hits. So, hopefully that timing makes sense. Included in the attachments to this is the rate and method of apportionment that was initially established in 2017-18. So, you can see, that's the first exhibit that we provided that shows the initial calculus that was done for that calculation, and then exhibit C shows the most recent levy. This assessment does change on a 2% basis year after year, and so that's the difference between those two.
This is an annual assessment?
Correct.
Okay.
And so, I propose that we initiate the proceedings to annex the project into CFD number 2017-1 for the purpose of paying for the impact of the development on city services pertaining to landscaping, street maintenance, and police services. I therefore recommend the following, that you adopt a resolution of the city council of the City of Tatchy, California declaring its intention to annex territory, track number 7366, to a community facilities district, and to authorize the levy of special taxes therein, the City of Tatchy Community Facilities District, number 2017-1, Public Services Annexation Number Two. So, I know it's complicated, happy to answer questions.
All right. Questions or comments for the public? Sorry about that.
I'll keep track of this. Thank you, Claudia Elliott. I do have some questions because I realized when I looked at this agenda that I'd seen some of this language before, and I realized that when I saw it before, it just sort of went over my head. And, you know, all this stuff can kind of do that sometimes. And as I started looking at it and wondering about it and thinking about it, I did have questions. So, I gave Jay a copy of my questions when he got here tonight because I wanted him to have the time to absorb, because I have to write about this.
Yes.
And I want to make sure I get it, that I really get it. So, if I get... If I understand, this annexation is to a community facilities district that was created as part of the mitigation measures for Walmart and also intended to ensure that future residential property owners will pay for certain city services such as street lighting, landscaping, and police services, correct? I got that part, okay. This is the second annexation, the first one being the address, the development known as the address. So, given that, I've seen a document that suggests that the address is not moving forward, which made me wonder, if you annex a subdivision into one of these community facilities districts, and then it doesn't happen, do you have to unannex it later? Is there work to be done later? And if so, is there expense, and who pays for that? So, that's one question.
Okay. You want to ask them all first, or you dress a beach?
How do you want to do this?
I'm fine since I have a copy. If she'd like to ask them all, I'll just take any notes I have, and then it's...
Go ahead. That's okay.
So, that was one, is do you have to undo it? So, then the next question I thought about, because I really didn't pay attention to this item the last time, and so, with police services, other than Walmart and these two subdivisions, have you ever done something that had... That imposed an additional expense on future property owners to pay for police services above their basic property tax that they're going to pay along with everybody else?
Good question.
And I don't know if you have or not, but I'm interested in that.
Yeah.
Then, so by this agreement with Sage Ranch, are you basically allowing the current property owner to vote, not with what you do tonight, but the whole process, to vote for future buyers of the property to bear this expense in perpetuity? And others not, but that's, you know?
Right.
So, now, a little foundation for my next question, which has three parts, and is related, but maybe not quite. So, in your budget process earlier this year, you said that the general fund challenges included subsidies to landscape and lighting districts, leaving less to pay for basic services because you're putting that money in there. So, if I read it right, this year it was more than $350,000 and projected to increase to more than $465,000 a year by '26, '27. So, then I thought about your conditions of approval of this development, and it's going to have a homeowners association. So, the language in the conditions say that the homeowners association shall assume ownership, operation, and maintenance responsibility for all landscaping within the public rights of way, including medians within the boundaries. And the CFD will fund the city's expense for maintenance of street lights, public rights of way, paving, a lot of words here, streets sweeping, storm drains, and community policing. So, does that mean that the landscaping expense for the Sage Ranch public right-of-way will not be an expense of the community facilities district? And if so, how are these expenses not relating to landscaping maintenance broken out in your exhibits B and C? And in moving forward, are you opening up the city to even greater subsidies of these services in the future? So, those are my questions.
Well, don't feel bad that you don't understand it because we've had melloroses for years and they're complex, but we're going to get some specific answers to your questions. But this is something that most people don't really... You know, you've got to really go through it like you did.
Yeah, and maybe if I can propose that I'll make an attempt to answer all these questions, and then, you know, for the sake of efficiency, that if there's further clarification tomorrow, then you feel free. I mean, if I obviously lost your question and you... The answer doesn't help at all, then just tell me, but I'll make a shot, and if it causes more questions, we'll go from there. So, first question that you gave me, and thank you for giving this to me. This helps me keep track. What is the status of the annexation as it relates to track 7363, which is the address project, if it does not move forward? And does it need to be undone? The answer is no. It does not need to be undone because, again, a CFD does not increase taxes on a piece of property until that property improves. And so, if the address project is revisioned to something else, the CFD is still valid, and the CFD will impact that project as well. So, if the property changes hands and a new property owner wants to come to this body and attempt to renegotiate the presence of the CFD, they can do that, but that's a disclosed fact when in the purchase of the property. The existence of the CFD now shows up on a title report as, hey, this exists, and it impacts this property, and this is part of that process, so...
To interrupt?
Yes.
Can that be in the future if it was sold to another entity? Can it be bifurcated or separated into smaller, or it's going to be all encompassing of the initial CFD?
It would all stay in the CFD unless we act otherwise.
Okay.
And then whatever they... So, if you look at the way those charts that are in the exhibits are done, it depends on the type of development determines the value of the tax, right? So, presuming it's some kind of housing, because that's what the zoning is, that presumes that will be whatever some new owner or what this owner re-envisioned the property for, we would have no reason to change the CFD. When that development occurs, maybe five years or 10 years from now, it will just move right into the CFD as it develops, and the levies will apply at that time. So, second question, with the exception of Walmart, the address and Sage Ranch and any other development projects impose additional expense on future property owners to pay for police services beyond basic property tax? I'd say the answer to that is yes. TOT is a good example of where the city has had an additional... So, transient occupancy tax, where we have an additional tax on a certain type of business to compensate us for this unique impacts of that business on our business model. If you're asking me, is there one that's specific to policing services, like, then no technically would be the answer, but I would view TOT as a similar type of taxing agency in the sense that we look at a type of business use, the way it uniquely impacts us as an agency, and then we tax them an additional amount to cover that expense. By this agreement, with Sage Ranch, would we be allowing the current property owner to vote? No. The CFD follows the property ownership path. So, it gets subdivided into 795 lots, the same owner, still the same owner, it's now 795 lots, and as he sells it or that business sells it to each individual person, the CFD follows that process. It becomes a disclosure at purchase.
So, he is the company voting for the future buyers to pay this?
Correct. Yes.
But like you said, it's disclosed. When you go...
When you buy a home.
And buy a home, it's disclosed at the time of sale. By the way, Phil, you're going to be paying an extra $920 a month on top. on top of everything else for that tax.
That's correct. And you know, all of us who, if you've bought a house before, you sit down with the escrow agent right at the end and they do an estimate of the area expenses and that's when that process occurs. So you know, obviously developers, they discuss with us the instituting of a CFD when we go through the process of generating the, you know, the conditions of approval for the project. So last set of questions, leading up, does this mean that landscaping expense for Sage Ranch Public Rights-of-Way will not be an expense to the Community Facilities District? That is correct. They will not be. Lighting will be. So the city will be paying the lighting fees for the Sage Ranch project out of these community facility district fee, well, out of general. So a reminder, CFD funds are, go to the general fund. Unlike a landscape and lighting district, those funds are separated into a standing fund. CFD funds go to the general fund by the nature of the laws that govern their creation. And so, but, so, correct. Landscaping will not be paid for by the city. Lighting will be. How are these expenses, those not related to landscaping maintenance broken out in the exhibits? I think this is a misconception of how a CFD works. A CFD is a general association of additional expense, not a specific association of additional expense. So like a landscape and lighting district says, we're going to add up every square foot of landscaping and count every streetlight and we're going to estimate the exact cost to do that and then we're going to distribute that to the affected property owners. A CFD, the way you do the budgeting for them, which you can find in the original report, it looks at like our entire police department budget and says like, look, we spend, you know, I don't recall the number off the top of my head, we spend this many millions of dollars and we have this many officers. So to add two additional officers or three additional officers to take care of this project will add this much ratio of budget. And so it produces generalized ratios of street maintenance, policing services, and landscaping to calculate the CFD expense. So you won't find a breakdown of, you know, it's $1,000 a house of tax and you're getting exactly this .1 of a police officer and this many square feet of street being repaid. It's a general connection. And then in moving towards this proposed annexation of the CFDs, the city opening sub up to greater subsidies in the CFD in the future? I think the answer is, you know, perhaps. It's the decision of the council to do this. Staff's recommendation is these large, the reality is, is that residential housing, in particular, in the state of California, due to Proposition 13, does not cover the proposition. Property taxes have not sustained themselves at the same rate as the cost of governance has. So residential does not pay for itself. You know, that's a tough statement to say out loud, but they don't produce enough tax revenue to address them. So the CFD is an effective tool for dealing with that. So when we have one house, would we spend $15,000 adding them to the CFD? That's not a particularly efficient use of money. But when we have a neighborhood like this, staff's recommendation will likely continue to be to the council that we ought to look to have them added to the CFD. So, but for the record, this owner is a willing participant in the CFD. This is not, this is a requirement, it's a condition of approval of the project. But the owner of this project accepts those conditions willingly. And so he is an active member in choosing to add the CFD to his property. So hopefully that gave you some good direction, but.
I just have one clarification I'd like to give. So I'm going to put this in real simple terms. They're not going to get a discount because they're doing their own landscaping through the HOA?
That's correct.
The CFD process is a legal process where which the city current residents do not subsidize new developments. So we're asking the developer to pay his own money for the new homeowner to pay their fair share.
Question on that?
Well, I just wanted to clarify. They're not asking the developer to pay this.
Correct, that is correct. We're asking the developer to approve it and then once he or she approves it, the company, then the process starts and the new homeowner.
I might respectfully disagree though.
Well.
Because the value of the house is affected by this tax.
It totally, it's passed on to the buyer.
$100 a month on a payment right now.
Passed on to the buyer.
Yeah.
HOAs, CDs.
The HOA.
Yeah, so it may affect the value of the house and it may affect, I mean.
Well, it will.
And so to the degree that the developer is paying for that, it might be, you know. So anyway, that's just me speculating.
No, no, no. Everything is built into the cost of a home. You know, the materials, labor, and the cost of maintaining what's around.
But at the same time, you're going to live in a neighborhood with an HOA that you're paying monthly that's going to have all the landscaping nice, you know, nicely done versus not all neighborhoods have the advantage of nice landscaping everywhere. It's like owner to owner.
Some of the problems that very rarely CSD has right now with their policing and their gate and things, they were not keeping up with the, they didn't originally set it up. Well, I'm not even sure if this process was around. This is a fairly new process.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four.
Yeah.
So wasn't around at that time.
It's, by the way, it's also pretty common here in California. This is a pretty common process. A lot of cities are employing this process for frankly, exactly the reason that Greg mentioned, which is the pressure, appropriate pressure from existing residents of the community that say, look, if we're going to grow and people are willing to come here, then we don't want to have to double the size of our police force and we all have to pay a bunch more taxes for that because our sleepy town didn't need it and now our sleepy town needs it. You know, so I'm not saying that's the case in Sage Ranch, but that's the illustration.
But if I want to go buy a home in there, I say I'm willing to pay the $100 a month. So that's true.
We keep property values up too.
Yeah.
Let's be honest, when you have a nice neighborhood, nice street, streetlights are on, landscaping, so on and so forth, property values are higher than the neighborhood generally than the neighborhood that doesn't have those sorts of elements.
Okay. Is that safe to answer?
It does. Thank you for your question.
Yeah. If you have a couple more, get with Jay and.
Thanks.
It's a difficult one. We had a big one for Capitol Hills and there hasn't been, over the years, and it's finally starting, but that has been sunsetted. It's got a different type of financing on it. But that was a method though, that the property owner taxed himself. I'm the only vote or sometimes two partners will vote to tax themselves to put in the streets, curbs and gutters and all the utilities and all that to get it going versus all of us existing homeowners have to build for that. At some point though, the city takes it over and provides the maintenance. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Do I have a question from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. One second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 3-0 vote to adopt the resolution as presented with a recusal from Councilwoman Preskner.
Thank you. Thank you Jay, item number 15 now.
Yes, sir. The third item I have for you tonight is the Surface Treatment II, very creatively named project. It's SV1 funds for, thank you for laughing at my show, for '22, '23. So as we all know, SV1, known as the Road Repair Act of 2017, taxes us at the pump for the purpose of providing funds at the state and local level for road maintenance and rehabilitation. We take our job seriously here at the city to get those dollars onto our roads as quickly as possible. We receive approximately $270,000 annually for a 10-year period. That's a number for maybe a couple of years ago. It's probably up a little bit since the value of gas is so high. So I hate to remind everybody of that, but that does affect this number. So the council approved, you guys approve a project list every year and every year we also give you a report of what we've done with that money. So this project is on the list and so we went out to bid for this project and we are looking to Seal Code 29 Streets within five residential areas. Maybe it goes just at the end of the picture because that's what everybody's always interested in, what streets are getting done. That's a depiction of the streets that are included in this bid. We are happy to report on October 5th. We'll be advertising and receive bids on November 2nd. We had a good bid opening. Total project budget was $350,000. So we received five bids with a low bid from VSS International, which is a slurry seal company or a seal code company known to us, operates out of the Bakersfield area. So we got good values from the top three bidders, which indicate a good, positive bidding environment. We did perform a responsiveness review in accordance with the Public Contract Code and determined that the bid provided by VSS International is deemed to be responsive. Physically, the project, we had budgeted $350,000 for this project and we continue to believe that with a bid price of $297,000, that the $350,000 is sufficient to complete the project. So we think we're going to stay on budget. And so we recommend that you award the Surface Treatment II project, SV1 fiscal year '22, '23 to VSS International Incorporated in the amount of $296,999.60 and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to a maximum of 10% of the original contract or $29,700. And I'll preempt the one question, which is when? Seal codes typically require 70 degrees and rising for pavement temperature. That's the engineering go-by on that. We may not get that before spring. If we do, I mean, last year we did. We had some weeks that would have done that. So if we do, we'll try to fit her in here before Christmas or in January. But if we don't, I would advise you that it's likely April or so before we get this project completed.
Okay. Any public comment? Council?
I think you touched on this, but for the general public's application, for all the people in the audience. This is an ongoing process. You have a process. You evaluate the needs, you evaluate the frequency of usage, you know, and this is all part of that. You know, it's not that we just arbitrarily say, oh, let's do face rates with this money, but this is.
My grandma lives on that street, so let's do that one. Yeah, no, it's definitely not that.
Right. So this reflects a thoughtful, data-driven process in terms of needs and usage and, you know, all the considerations.
Absolutely. Let me expand on that. The city has a pavement maintenance program. It's been put in place about seven, eight years ago and is updated every couple of years or so. Dawn manages that for the city. And so what it does is it rates literally every single segment of street in the city and assigns it a numerical value. And then the program goes a lot deeper than that though. It looks at what type of remedy is necessary to improve the street. Because we have some that are so poor that if you put a seal code on it, it's a pointless expenditure. And so seal code projects tend to be applied to better quality roads to extend their life. That's the theory from an engineering perspective. And so it's definitely worth our money because if you can keep a road that's in pretty good condition in good condition, it costs much less long-term to keep it in good condition. If you wait for them to deteriorate and always take on the worst street, $350,000 is like one block of a downtown street that has to be completely rebuilt for a couple of blocks. Whereas if we can spend this, we can do 29 streets, we can give them a fresh coat, we get another five or seven years of life out of those. So our program includes a mixture of the preventative maintenance and then trying to grab the older streets and get new.
Thank you. And I know you've shared that before. I just think it's important that when we're looking at these, that that's a part of the context.
I gave you the long one today.
No, no, but I think that's healthy for us to understand, like you said, especially not applying a Band-Aid to a war wound, but understanding where we can make this money do the most good and then looking at other pots of money for some of those more deep, you know, projects that are going to just be shorter, but nonetheless, good time comes too.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So yeah, thank you.
Any other council comments? There was less than half of the highest bid.
Less than half?
The $296 was less than the high bid of $650.
Oh, yeah. The high bid though was way out of whack. If you go back to the list, I don't know what they were thinking. The first three are, and that happens. Sometimes a contractor is like, well, if you pay me this much, I'll do the job. And they hope they get lucky. But the first three, I always look at the top three, four. If they're kind of in a good window, you know you got a good bid.
And they're locked in until next spring so that we don't get this.
Yes. Technically, that's a great question. Technically, they have a right under the Public Contract Code to renegotiate the price, but they have to adjust. It's no change in labor. If they can show us, hey, I paid this much for a gallon asphalt when I bid it and it's gone $0.50, then we will make a price adjustment to keep that contractor whole. But those are usually pretty controllable. Unless the price of that gallon, if the seal code goes insane, it's already insane. So we should be in good shape. I'm confident this will be fine.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
One second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Preskner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to award the Surface Treatment II project, SV1 fiscal year 2022, 2023, to VSS International, Inc., as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Andrews report.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Jay, if you could go back to the podium. I'm going to do something a little different tonight. I have several updates, but I'd like the updates to come from the department heads that are managing these specific projects. I'd like Jay to talk about, we didn't talk about this, but the Denison water main replacement and the delays. Last couple of times we've talked about this project, we talked about starting to get it quickly. It's actually an emergency bid. We went out and we found a contractor, awarded a bid. But let's say because of COVID and the associated transportation issues, there are now some delays. So can you expand on that?
Yeah, material delay on butterfly valves in particular. So the project includes like 10 specific types of valves, which the contractor tells us is a six-week lead item for purchase. So I'm getting fatigued with the COVID excuse. We will dig a little deeper before we grant an extension to that project, you know, in terms of requiring some documentation to prove that that delay is really true. But it is possible. A lot of those materials come from overseas. A lot of those finished products do. And so it is possible that they're on a six-week delay. So we'll dig, but I would kind of have you put that in your hip pocket. And then at that point, if we're into, you know, December or January, not sure what the weather is going to do for us. So we're going to keep a tight eye on it and try to do what we can, but it's a little tricky.
There may be some delays. Thank you, Jay. And the other item is really exciting is that Jay sits on the Technical Advisory Committee for Kern COG. Mayor Smith, of course, runs the Board of Directors. But we have some exciting funding news for the Pinion Road Project.
So subject to board approval, which I think is coming to you all soon. We were able to, the Pinion Street CMAC project, due to some unexpected significant expenses with powerful relocations, that project went from a million dollar project to a $1.4 million project. This is, I reported to you guys when we awarded the project. But we were able to secure some additional funding unused by the county of Kern through CMAC to recover the $400,000. So subject to board approval of that change, the project is now fully funded and we won't have to use our hard-earned transportation or traffic fee funds for that purpose. Save the standard 11% natural, so.
And CMAC stands for?
Congestion mitigation and air quality.
Okay, just for everyone, okay.
I can back to the air quality part of that.
That's exactly, and that's how we got the grade.
Yep, that's right.
Those pesky high schoolers came in handy. Everyone's.
That dusty road. Yes.
Thank you, Jay. Key, if you could come up to the podium. I'd like Key to talk about our successful, most recent blood drive and then after that, our veterans, not the city's veterans event, but the veterans event is happening on Friday this week.
Absolutely. Our last Wednesday, we held a blood drive, as we do every other month, six a year. This one was our second highest with, two months ago, being the highest. We had eighty-seven people here in the community registered to donate. Sixty-five successfully completed the process, and additional five in plasma and platelets. So when we do these blood drives, the bus for Houchen comes out, and they do whole blood donations, and then inside the facility, we used to Hachvee Vineyard Church, they're gracious enough to host. We take one of their classrooms, they set up a couple of beds, so the platelets and plasma can be taken. Those are used for cancer patients or victims. So those are other types of blood products that are necessary to help save lives. So for me, it's very personal. I think a lot of family members have needed blood products, so for me, it's very personal. And then it just shows the collaboration of our community. So we spearhead this. Houchen had come to us during COVID and said, hey, everyone's shutting down. They can't let us in. We figured out ways by partnering in community collaborations to get these events done. So thanks to Hachvee Vineyard Church, Houchen Community Blood Bank, the Hachvee Valley Healthcare District, and the city, we're able to do these every other month. And then we were hosting every month, and then we allowed Edenist Health Hachvee Valley to take our alternate months. Originally, we were doing twelve a year, every month, and now we do six, and we allow, we gave six to Edenist, so they do it at the hospital. And then one of the highlights, Councilmember Strickner, eight gallons. This was her eight-gallon honor. She received a commemorative license plate noting eight gallons of donation, and she is there each and every single time, every other month, so.
I just want to editorialize one thing. There was a fellow in the parking lot that was, worked for Houchen, and I said hello there, and I just briefly talked to him for a moment, and he said, I never miss an opportunity to go on a Hachvee blood drive, because everyone out here is so wonderful. It's a blood drive I never want to miss. And so I just think that speaks to what Key is really establishing that culture of collaboration and spirit of mission.
And it is that community event, and it's received that way. And when I'm out there, I take the time to make sure I tell these people, thank you, and that it is, there is a personal connection for me. But it's Hachvee gifts, and they just continue to step up and we grow. So, and just kind of give you a little recap. In three years, 1,200 people have donated blood, and each unit of blood can save up to three lives. That's 3,600 potential lives the last three years, thanks to the Hachvee community. So I'll give you a little insight of that. And then moving over to Friday, our Veterans Day celebration on November eleventh. It's really been spearheaded by our veteran groups, the American Legion, our BMW, and all the auxiliary groups that make up the American Legion. They're partnering with TVR PD. They're the lead, and everything's going to take place at Central Park on November eleventh. The event is going to start at 10:00 AM. The actual ceremony and speaking will kick off at eleven with the bell ringing. They have a special speaker in Karen Galen. They're going to have a kids' boot camp for three to 10-year-olds, and it was a huge success last year. And in talking with Kevin Davy, the commander of the American Legion, he said, you know, last year, we asked a couple of our members to go out and give them the encouragement, and the kids loved being drilled as if they were going through a boot camp. So he's excited about having that. And they've got many other community partners that are helping making this happen, but it's going to be at Central Park. Again, everything starts at 10, and this year they'll have food, which is one of the things that the community asks them to do. And any questions, I'm happy to answer by either.
Mayor Smith will be speaking at the Veterans Event on Friday, so. Thank you, Key. I'd like to have Chief Crager come up to the podium, talk about three items, successful Trump retreat, successful Special Olympics run, and our most recent Department Justice Audit.
Good evening. I'll be brief. Okay, thank you, sir. October 27th, we held our Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run in downtown Hachvee here. I challenge you all to come out and be a part of that. Councilmember Wiggins, Councilmember Strickner came out. I believe you walked the course with us. I mean, just fantastic event. There were thirty athletes and coaches. California Highway Patrol came out, music, dancing, just, I mean, just a really amazing event. These athletes are just incredible, just pure joy for this whole thing. We were able to raise over $1,600 for Special Olympics, which was at the time the leading team in Kern County. So a great job by the community. We had city staff participate. Jay came out and rented his jeans, tried to set a course record, I think. City staff was out on the streets cheering as odds became voids. It was really just a great event. So we followed that up on the Hachvee Police Foundation, sponsored and hosted our annual Trump Retreat. We gave out over 700 pounds of candy. I think, I'm not really great with that many crowds, but I'd say probably 750,000 people in downtown Hachvee down there on Gray Street. We were actually able to have a little bit of candy left over, probably about 50 pounds left over, that we took over to the KD Housing Track, which was just swamped with people, and I was able to save a few households that had run out of candy early on in the evening. So again, a great event in downtown Hachvee. And then finally, another achievement for our department. Every three years, we have a Department of Justice Audit for our California law enforcement telecommunications system, where they conduct a legislative review of our policies, user agency agreements, and completion required trainings in security. And we were found not only to be in full compliance, but there were absolutely zero findings, zero recommendations. And I've been given this for a long time, and that does not happen very often. So it's a testament to our entire staff, and especially our communications and records supervisor, Carrie Ann Ritchie, who supervises and oversees all of our CLX entries, and does an amazing job, all of our staff with their data entry and security, and, you know, we're really highly scrutinized in how we handle that sensitive information. So to have a full compliance audit is really, really amazing. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
That's all I have.
I just want to second that that was, I went to that because I thought I was going to help Chief and the folks that deserve to be supported, and I left so blessed and so touched by the spirit of these wonderful athletes. I got to see one of them the other day in a restaurant, and he came up and threw his arms around me and didn't let go, and it just made me realize that we continue to talk around the fact that this is a wonderful place to live and raise our families and come together and do life. So that example was a beautiful, beautiful opportunity to see that on display. So thank you, Chief. I just want to say that tomorrow's an important day for our community, for our state, for our nation, and encourage everyone, if you haven't voted, to please vote. I think that with all of the complaining and griping we hear from the talking heads on the news, I do believe this is still the most wonderful country in the world, and tomorrow's an important way to engage in the process to keep it that way. So I just want to encourage folks to get out and vote tomorrow.
Michael?
I just, I had a long talk with my doctor about doing blood donations, and with my medical condition, I'm not allowed to. So I'm just always so jealous of everybody to be able to do that, because I always tried to do the best I can. And so it's kind of disappointing that I can't participate in it, so I want to do what I can and get the word out. My father is a member of the, I don't know how many gallons he's down at the Red Cross down at his church, but he's participating for the Davies family, for me.
Very good.
Do that. But Halloween, what a great event, everybody in town. We actually stayed home this year, and we have fourteen kids. So every fourteen, fourteen kids had a lot of candy. So the last kid, I think I got him about five pounds. So I just, I had to get rid of it, because I don't, then I'll eat it. So but very, very happy with everything that's going on. Just thankful that we live here in this community, and we have this opportunity tomorrow to vote. Make sure you get out there and do your part. Like my father always told me, if you don't vote, don't complain. So I've never missed opportunity not to vote, because I complain. But I appreciate being on the council, and appreciate everybody's, everybody in this town, how we come together, how we do things. And just hope that everybody stays safe. Hopefully, we'll have a great holiday season, and don't eat too much turkey. And I just want to make one other comment about our Corey Costello. So proud of him running in that New York Marathon. I can do 26 miles, but I have to do it in two weeks and ten basketball games, but I can't do it all in one event. So but what an achievement. Good for him. And then one other announcement, you know, we got a Hachvee football game, championship game Thursday night. So we need to be out there and support our local teams. And then tomorrow night, there's a 6:30 school board meeting. I think we all need to be there and say our piece about what's going on in our school board. Is it tomorrow, right?
Yeah, but what time is it?
I think it's at five.
It's at five?
Pretty sure.
Thank you.
So you better get there at 3:00.
Yeah. So we need to make sure we support our young people and the PA system. What I've heard about, it's a joke. I think we need to all be out there and find out what's going on. Oh, yes. Already did mine. I voted already. But I think we need to really go out there and support and find out what's going on in our school district. And we have a lot of children in this town. I've raised, my wife went to school here, I have three daughters from school here, and now I have five grandchildren in the school system. So I think we need to take precedence and make something, make sure things get done what they're supposed to be getting done. That's all I have, Mayor.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm still a proud grandmother, and I went to Hachvee's football game last Friday night. I have all ten fingers and toes. I didn't think I would. It was very cold. But we won, and now the really good news is we get to play at home again. But the game's going to be on Thursday night because Veterans Day being Friday. So we have a Thursday CIF playoff game, and so far, our home court advantage is played off because their quarterback couldn't do anything the other night. It was too cold. He couldn't throw where he was supposed to. So we'll put up with it and just bring lots of hot coffee and come out. And, you know, I grew up in Mahawee, so I listen to, yeah, Hachvee. Yeah, they always win, whatever. But mountain football hasn't been going so well in the last few years. It's been five years since we've had any kind of a championship. So I invite all of you to come out. Local businesses are decorating, leaving them up all week, decorate your cars, whatever, because mountain football is back. And when I say mountain football, the high Thursday will be 48, so it'll definitely be mountain football. But don't hesitate to come.
Okay, thank you. I just have one thing, and I was able to, after a lot of persistent phone calls to the Department of Transportation in Washington, and just getting run out, I mean, run around everywhere, putting on this person's email or voicemail and this and that, was able through Kern COG to get a phone time with the Deputy Assistant Secretary of Transportation, just under people, okay, about our truck lighting lights. I've been doing this for over 20 years, and we told them, they were very, and I was able to get Jay to sit down with me and Aaron Hakimi, the executive director. They don't always like to give their meeting times to folks that are on staff at different places. But if they get a mayor or an elected official or something, they'll make the time. So we spoke for about half an hour. There's still an opportunity for this midsection, there's three sections on Highway 58. The middle section is the one starting around Caliente and starting up and going up over Hard Flat there. The first section is General Beale Road in that area. The third section is up around Room Road. But we're asking for 44 million for the middle section, and we're just got our fingers crossed, but we got their attention. They were happy to hear our concerns, and that's where we're going for now. Thank you, Jay, for helping me out. So it's still, it's still an opportunity. That's all I got for now. So I don't keep coughing. We're going to go into closed session, and we'll report out anything here that's in the action table.